And I would like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council, the regular meeting, to order at this point. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, September 3rd, 2013.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion, additions, or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I'd like to have a correction to the agenda. It's under item F. I guess it's the committee of the whole, item one, and it's G. Ordinance number 2013-09-082, I believe, was kept in committee. That has to deal with the fines for property maintenance code violations. Diane?
No, it was sent out of committee, but it's going to be at the October 7th meeting.
Oh, it's going to go to the October 7th council meeting, sorry about that. Anyway, it's not on tonight's agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other items for the agenda? All right, we will move on to petitions and communications, and I have Maria Ryan first.
Thank you. Maria Ryan, One Boy Navista Court in Urbana, and I'm Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Commission, and I wanted to come by during this comment period just to give you a little bit of feedback from just some of the discussions between me and staff members and so forth with regard to the inclusion of RECs in the municipal aggregation contract. It's my understanding that the plan is to go ahead and include that, but I did want to address a little bit of what came up. That, and just to, I think, reiterate a little bit of what Scott has probably already informed you, that the RECs were included in the Phase 1 of the Climate Action Plan because they came out of the ICLI strategies. We used a software tool that ICLI produces, and so we're really kind of relying on some of their expertise with what's been done in other communities and their research in terms of choosing that as one of our strategies, and in fact, one of our main strategies for this phase of the Climate Action Plan. In the short timeframe this before us, we really weren't able to find out from our regional ICLI contact what research they based their tools on. I think probably some of that could be unpacked a little bit more over time. And again, I think you're aware that RECs are fairly widely accepted as a means of reaching GHG reduction goals. Certainly, the EPA recognizes them, and that doesn't make them unassailable, and I think that the questions that have been brought up have some merit, and we'd really like to unpack them a little bit more fully over time. But certainly, to do that is going to take more than a couple of weeks prior to when the contracts have to be selected. I think those of you who were here when the council first approved the Climate Action Plan will remember that we very intentionally broke it into two phases so that some of the strategies that are proposed in Phase 1 could be vetted in just this way, but, you know, certainly the intention was that they would be followed through Phase 1, and I think that I really would like to see SAC hear from more experts, people who have maybe a higher degree of technical expertise certainly than I would have with regard to energy markets and so forth. We have varying degrees of expertise on the commission itself, but I think that we do have some time to listen to that, and so I was certainly very glad to hear that the council as a whole did decide to kind of move forward within Phase 1, and just, I guess, maybe to assure some of the other folks that there is this intentional strategy so that we will have time to take a look at some of those other questions and that we do take them seriously.
Thank you very much, Maria. I really appreciate the work that you did in putting the Climate Action Plan together. Any questions for Maria? Okay, Carol?
Because I don't know much about the energy contracts and plans, did your committee get an opportunity to look at this before it came to us as a council so that you could give us recommendations on that?
We didn't specifically look at the contract. What it was is that we formed a Climate Action Plan, which as one of the strategies for reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Urbana, or at least contributing our part to the broader effort, I think that's going on nationwide and worldwide, we recommended as one of those strategies, and in fact, as a major strategy, that RECs be pursued. The tool that we were using came from ICLI, which is Local Governments for Sustainability. It's actually a global organization, and they do a lot of research and pull a lot of information together about what various communities are doing globally to try to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and they created a spreadsheet tool that we use that we plugged in a lot of local information with regard to the size of your population, the types of industry that you have in your community, the region that you live in, the section of the grid that you pull your energy from, and a number of other factors. And then what it does is it kind of ranks in order how much greenhouse gas reduction you can estimate that your community will reduce by following various strategies, and actually, the RECs ranked very, very high when we pulled everything together in that tool. I understand that ICLI is coming out with a new tool, and we would probably be looking to use that when we move into Phase 2 in about a year's time, so, thank you.
Okay, Dennis?
So, we also explored a little bit about trying to apply some of the income from the aggregated electrical savings to bring them to purchase purchases that would directly affect savings here in the community. Bill Brown had some suggestions in that area, and I thought it was valuable. So, it's not real clear to me about setting, adjusting the fee that we charge, we collect as a city for the aggregation, but if we were to be able to collect a slightly higher fee and we reinvested the income into specific projects here in the community, in the city specifically, probably, the city building and other buildings that are publicly owned, do you think that your sustainability committee would have been interested in that approach? Is that something that you might have wanted to see occur as an option, or is that something that would take a lot more thought?
Yeah, I think it would take some thought in terms of, you know, what types of strategies would be proposed. We certainly have in the Climate Action Plan, there are a number of locally-based strategies such as what you're mentioning, and I know that some of our discussions about what might end up in Phase 2, you know, also speculated, you know, as to what, that it would depend on what kinds of funding would be available. The, I think at some level, we kind of have a, I guess, like a balanced portfolio that comes out of the Phase 1 document, that one of the advantages of the RECs, you know, provided that they are what they say they are, and I think there's fairly good reason to believe that, although, you know, again, I think that, you know, there's merit to some of the questions and critiques that are coming before us. It's technically a fairly complex product as far as the energy markets go. However, what it does is it kind of gives, it's one-pronged of a multi-pronged approach. So while we do have a lot that's local, that's already locally based in Phase 1, would continue to have that in Phase 2, this also helps us work in concert with a number of communities globally by kind of pooling a resource in a sense through, operating through some of those energy markets through RECs. So it kind of gives us another, I guess, another inroad toward reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks for coming and talking about this. As far as like getting federal or state grants for energy efficiency or greenhouse gas reduction, how much have you looked at that, and do they grant those based on having that Climate Action Plan? It seems like that would be an important thing if you're trying to achieve some level where they'd say this community's doing well, and they're responsible, they can handle this grant or whatever. Or do they also grant it on a specific target reduction of greenhouse gases?
Yeah, they probably vary by grant, and I know that with some of our strategies that we did have, you know, in terms of looking forward to what we would be doing in Phase 2, would be to look at what grant opportunities are out there, and so that would, you know, whatever we find out in this interim period would influence what we might consider for the second phase.
Julie?
Maria, were you copied on Bill's recent email that talked about compliance versus voluntary RECs?
Yes.
Have you been able to, do you understand that enough to explain it to us?
Not at present.
I tried to figure, yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, I've been trying to figure it out, and the compliance RECs are all over the map, too, because, you know, it depends on what part of the country they're from. The compliance RECs are hardly any better for Illinois than they are for the junk ones, the voluntary ones. They're down there at transaction-level costs and all that kind of stuff. I tried to understand with others, but there are compliance RECs that are, and you used a $10 number there, I don't know if you, is that an average here, or where'd you get your $10 number? You just pulled, okay, yeah, okay, you can pull that from this graph, you can, for those who are wondering, I'm looking at a graph that Bill passed around that has squiggles that are literally all over the map, from $70 to, down to $1 for the cost of RECs. It makes for interesting reading, trying to understand when you are actually encouraging the production of alternative energy as opposed to just paying for people to push paper around. And Bill's contention has been that the RECs that we're getting are just literally paper being pushed around and are essentially worthless as opposed to actual money going into renewable energy, you know, that's finally sinking in with some of this stuff. And so, pursuing something that where we can actually say we really are getting a reduction of carbon or whatever is probably a very reasonable request, and one that I can support.
Eric?
Well, I think we have decided what we're going to do this year, and I think we can have a very fruitful discussion, you know, throughout the coming year for the next phase of the Climate Action Plan. But given the relative dollars that are involved in this compared to the other things that we have to deal with right away, I would propose that we actually try, if we possibly can, to put this in the back of our minds for a while and deal with like these really big-ticket items that we're fussing about.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carol McUsick?
I didn't have the feeling at, listening to 9-9, which I wasn't at, to the public comment, to some of it in the video, I didn't have the feeling that people, maybe they didn't know that this was like what the zoning ordinance is like, that the multi-part tax amendment had pervasive changes that were in many sections. So one thing would might be, you know, I thought, I was hearing people talk about they were against doing it now because they wanted better examination of the home occupation, so maybe, what I was going to say is, I think that the thing that I'd be interested in seeing examined as a government information slash environmental issue is the style of publishing with the spine, the spiral spine, because you can pull it out, you could pull out pages, so it isn't, it has that weakness of authoritativeness, and also, like in the library, let's say that there were one of the few places that would keep a, you know, let's say you could get away with fewer print copies by mostly doing it as a web publication, and let's say doing it as a web publication would have a real allure or advantage because you could build in changes as they become effective, basically the day they're passed or when the pamphlet form is published. And then, you know, an engineer, they'd go to the web and they'd only find one thing. This is the zoning ordinance today. They wouldn't, in their office, they might have a couple copies kicking around, and they have to check them and see which one is the latest, and they still have to call in to see if the latest one that they have is the latest that there is, so could they like this, would they want to analyze, you know, are there parts of this, are, do we want, is this a good, like, couldn't it be done on the web mostly and just have solid bound spines for the library where it's on the shelf and they have to put a label on it so they can see it, you know, which they can't put a label on them? So that's basically the question about the, but the tree, this is a matter of life and limb for the trees, the legacy trees, like say that is one of the changes in the multi-part tax amendment that's going to allow people not to pave around their legacy trees, so it'd be good if you were having to delay while you're considered the style of publication, let's say, you might want, are there certain things you'd pull out of, that's getting too far along with the thinking, I just think the whole publication style, and wouldn't you need, for that kind of an issue, wouldn't you need to have something like a board of government information, because you would be balancing?
You have one minute, Ms. McUsick.
And what I mean by a board of government information is, it'd be sort of like something that would be set up like our other boards, and it would happen in like this room, and it would establish some starting points like for, and help us to learn how to understand, oh, say, the pamphlet form of publishing, or how you understand in the code, if you read a section of the code, you want to know what part came from earlier and what part came from later by the line that has a reference line, you know, for, these are things that are conundrums for me, so that's what I would envision it. But I would have like experts of different sorts, of different kinds represented, like legal and information services, audiovisual, disability, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood would like, do not wish to speak, but would like to express their concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Dural Cruz?
Could I speak at the time you phrase it?
Sure. Dan Elg?
Good night, Allison.
Sure.
Thank you.
Carlos Donaldson?
You have to leave.
Okay. So, we will move on, unfinished business. Ordinance number 2013-08-075, and ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Section 22.22-1, Home Rule Municipal Retailers and Service Occupation Tax. So, okay, motion by Carol Ammons?
Second.
Seconded by Eric Jacobson. We have two people that want to talk about this. Would you like to talk, Dural, first?
Dural Cruz, basically, I would just like to get a clarification from the mayor and the city council regarding the discussion you had on this topic two weeks ago, to make sure that it is also part of the conversation this evening, and some clarity is provided to the community in regards to this. And I know you're going to be discussing the merits of the increase, of a sales tax increase, and hopefully be looking at counterbalancing proposals that might entail some budget savings of some kind, and I commend you for looking comprehensively and taking the time and not rushing into this, and that you do realize hopefully that any tax increases are significant and that they be taken as a last resort. But my question tonight is very simple, and that is that two weeks ago, when you were discussing this topic, the mayor stated, and I'm thinking maybe some of the city council members also affirmed, and stated that by looking at the sales tax as a possible additional revenue flow for the city, we can avoid raising the property tax this next year. And so my question tonight is, as you talk about raising the sales tax, I would encourage you to reiterate that comment and clarify for the community if in fact, I hope what you said or suggested last week is, or two weeks ago, is in fact still the case today. And the reason I raise this issue with you is because those of you that were on the city council maybe two or three years ago, when the issue of the gas tax first came up, and Urbana took the bold step of instituting a gas tax in our community of two cents, and the initial proposal was that it was going to be raised each year incrementally until the city council decided not to raise it anymore, and there was a discussion with the community that you agreed to have a graduated increase for three years, at which time you would review whether you needed to continue to raise that tax. And the following year, Champaign raised their gas tax, instituted at four cents, and the city council approved a proposal by the mayor the very next year to raise it to four cents. And that agreement in terms of what you said with regards to the sales tax of the community was not kept, okay? And people still remember that, and that was something that was agreed to when the public came and you said you would follow that particular process. So tonight, I think you owe the public a clear explanation if you in fact are raising the sales tax a quarter cent, and that addresses the revenue flow to the community. I would like to hear you say very clearly and unequivocally, like you did two weeks ago, that you will not raise the property tax for at least another year. Not to do so simply implies that you are not being forthright and honest with the community in knowing, well, are they going to raise? Is this something you're rushing through now, or are you willing to keep your commitments to the community with regards to sales tax? So tonight, I hope you debate it thoroughly, you look at options for savings, and that you do in fact state, you know, this, the purpose for taking a position on the sales tax is to avoid raising the property tax next year, okay? I think you owe that to the community, and that has been said, that has been a comment and a statement made in public. I would just like to hear it again so the public knows that you aren't considering raising a tax in six months, next spring when you come back to building the budget again. I think the community needs that clarity, that forthrightness, and your integrity of a city council in terms of considering sales taxes be maintained in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Elg?
Hello, my name is Dan Elg. I live at 1002 West Clark Street. I gave my main arguments against the sales tax here two weeks ago, so most of what I say tonight will probably just be responses to what I've heard from the council and what I've read since then. First of all, I'd really like to thank Alderman Madigan and Alderwoman Ammons for your thoughtfulness and your desire to seek more reasonable solutions of addressing Urbana's budget problems, and I look forward to hearing any potential solutions that you might have identified. Though most of the discussion recently is focused on Carl, the unfortunate fact is that the city's budget situation is a part of a long-running trend. I read in the News Gazette today that over the past five years, revenues have increased 4% on average, but spending has gone up 16% over the same time despite the recession. Well, this keeps Urbana from being able to address shortfalls such as Carl when they arise. Urbana's problem is not a revenue problem, it's a spending problem. We have to think of better ways and smarter ways to spend city money. For example, do we really need a $1.45 million TIFT, the Landmark Hotel? That helps one property owner, but it leaves the rest of us out to dry and to pick up the tab. Last week, I also heard things that Daryl just mentioned, such as, "Give us this tax increase right now, and we'll get the budget under control. This tax increase now, and then spending will be under control. This increase now, and then no more tax increases." Well, despite the best intentions, history shows that that argument just never holds true. This is especially obvious in Illinois, a state that just used that argument two years ago to pass a massive tax increase. Has our state's financial condition increased at all? Not one iota. In fact, now many of those same people are saying that they need to raise that tax again. We all know that that argument doesn't work, so it seems almost cynical and deceptive to hear it used here. Also, last week, Alderman Jacobson took issue, that I referenced the differences between the general citizens of Urbana and the politicians. In a rather condescending tone, we were all reminded that city council members are actually citizens, and they do pay taxes, and they're even members of the same species as us. Well, I did actually already know that, but what was conspicuously omitted was this key difference. I cannot go up to any of you and demand your money for a cause that I like, and neither can anybody else back here. If I got to choose how my tax dollars were spent, heck, I might want higher taxes, too. But you're the people who get to choose how taxes are spent, but it's not just your money, it belongs to each and every individual who earned it, so those choices should be made very carefully and very frugally. After all, the whole point of government isn't to make the city council feel warm and fuzzy about its agenda by spending everyone else's money on causes it likes, it's to safeguard freedom for all citizens. I see no way in which a 9% sales tax furthers that goal. I'd also like to address the fallacious argument that, well, it's just a quarter of a percent increase. We need to look at the big picture. It may sound trite, but remember the straw that broke the camel's back. That's the logical conclusion of, it's just a little bit more, it's just a little bit more. Constantly moving in a certain direction blindly cannot always be good. Where we start out has to be taken into account. If the sales tax were small, maybe a quarter percent wouldn't be that much, but it's not. Some level has to be too high, and I certainly think the idea among most people in Urbana, in Illinois, and in all the US is that 9% is too much. The city website claims, quote, "The city of Urbana is an excellent place to live and do business," end quote. However, a 9% sales tax and the highest property tax rates by far in all of Champaign County would certainly suggest otherwise. If the council really believes that Urbana should be an excellent place to live and do business, which I believe, and which I think most of us believe, it should seize this opportunity to live up to that idea for once.
You have one minute, Mr. Eng.
Thank you. So with that in mind, we were all asked to submit limericks for Urbana's 180th birthday, so here's mine. There once was a cute little town where the sales tax never went down. Now it might go to nine, there's no way that's fine, so we need to stop clowning around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Ammons, seconded by Jacobson. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that the commentary that was done by the Chamber of Commerce had a huge error in it, and there was a statement that Carl has never paid taxes, and anybody who believes that should please check with the city or the county treasurer. that should please check with the city or the county treasurer. I've written to the Chamber of Commerce and asked them if they find out they published an error that they please issue a correction. So let's be clear that we do have a loss of over $800,000 by Carl no longer paying property taxes. Clarification? Yes, anyone else? Eric?
Well, I don't really have anything to add to what I said last week, indeed. Maybe I shouldn't add anything to what I said last week. And Carol says, "Yeah, that's right." But I will support this. I, it is not the entire answer, but I can't figure out how to fill this hole in any scenario or by any strategy that doesn't include this. We have a great big uncertainty in our budget with respect to healthcare costs. And we have no idea how that's really going to come out. So I, so, you know, what, I think that the mayor has suggested that a lot of the healthcare costs for our employees, I think the mayor has suggested in a previous memo, that hopefully a lot of the, a lot of the remainder of our budget shortfall will be dealt with by containing those costs and by opportunities that are put in place by the Affordable Healthcare Act. But that situation is, how that's actually going to play out in dollars and cents is not at all clear yet. I don't know how we're gonna, you know, really pay the bills without doing this.
Bill?
Yeah, I don't think I've had as much citizen input on anything except for maybe historic preservation than I have on this. But it wasn't a lot, it was maybe half dozen people on each side, and they were pretty much divided. I was kind of surprised there'd be that many people actually for the increase. I think they understand that without an increase, then you have to cut services. And they, in general, like the services we're providing, they don't want to see anything cut. I'd like to see sales tax at 8%, but that's $2.5 million we'd have to come up with. You know, Champaign can raise $2.5 million with a quarter percent. So we're at a little disadvantage. So, yeah, I'm gonna support this.
Diane?
I'm going to support the sales tax increase. I will not support an increase in the property tax rate. And for the record, I didn't support the accelerated increase in the local motor fuel tax either, because I felt that we, well, basically didn't keep our promise to the taxpayers.
Carol?
I appreciate that. And I am one of the most critical folks when it comes to taxes of any sort being raised. And people have become accustomed, as Dural said, to people in elected positions not keeping their word. I had that experience on the county board, just with a wave of the pan, they changed the ordinance. And so in this regard, I've gone over and over on this one. I've met with several people. I will support the sales tax increase, but I will not support a property tax increase under no circumstances from this seat. As long as I'm here, I'll vote no on that. Because I think that, again, we do have to look at this, this is a business, and it is other people's money, and you do have to, at some point, hold a line. And I don't think we've gotten to that point yet as a city to really look at what we have to do. And unfortunately, when you don't have money, sometimes you do have to cut some services, sometimes you do have to scale back. Urbana does not like to do that, but we can't take that off the table and continue to raise taxes over and over again. So I will support this one, but we will be very cautious and careful in looking, from my seat anyway, at where we can cut other expenditures and hold a line on some of these other things.
Dennis?
Sure. I guess we probably all might comment on this. Urbana's really trying to maintain the best possible balance between services and income that require, that's required to serve those services. We did cut social services this year, which was a very difficult decision for us to make. That's services that we give to the community at large to support very important programs for children and disabled individuals. We didn't, we didn't allocate as much as we had in the past. And when we talk about the property tax rising, we have to remember that Urbana receives only 18% of the property taxes, and that we don't have control over other districts who also have an ability to change their property tax rates. And I'd like to also point out that the price of materials doesn't go down. And I remember last year at this time, we learned from Public Works that the price of asphalt had gone up 7% over the past year. And these prices don't suddenly then drop. Our costs of doing business continue to rise, and we're not even talking about human services here or wages. We're talking about just materials that are necessary to maintain the roads and our structures. So nothing's getting cheaper. I don't think you've seen prices being, dropping on too many items at the store. I don't think shoes are being sold for less than they were five years ago. Oh, that's the same for the city, too. So there has to be some way of providing services and materials to keep the city going at a rate that people are used to. And, you know, we have, you know, we can stop repaving roads, you know, at the rate that we'd like to. When we get, I get people who call me about potholes in front of their house or sidewalk repair. These are things that are not life, they're inconveniences. You know, it may come down to making decisions in that area as well, if we don't have some kind of way of keeping revenues up. I guess I'll be supporting this particular raise. We have a hole to fill. I don't think that this amount that we're going to collect is going to fill the hole. It's sort of like throwing gravel at the bottom, but, you know, some effect, I mean, to be, to be responsible, we have to do something.
Just as a point of clarification, I will say that the Urbana property tax rate for the city government is lower than it was 10 years ago. We had a concerted effort to make sure that the city tax rate was lowered, kept even with the city of Champaign. And there was a small increase, but we're still considerably lower than we were 10 years ago. Anybody else? Mike?
I think I'm outnumbered. I'll make this brief. Obviously, the writing is on the wall. I am not in support of this and Dural, so I'm gonna not go along with what you want me to do. I'm gonna say I'm opposed to both, not just this, not just property taxes, but the sales tax increase, too. I think the Chamber of Commerce made some very good points in their letter today. If you want to take exception with something you think is a mistake and that maybe, you know, one of the largest employers in town who does offer millions and millions of dollars of charity care a year is or is not tax exempt, we can, we can have that discussion another day. But what's before us today is a quarter percent sales tax increase that just adds, I would say, not necessarily, not necessarily a little bit of gravel into the bottom of a large hole. I, I think it is literally another pinprick. It's, it's, it's almost like Chinese water torture. I don't know how to explain it. It's one fee on top of another, one tax on top of another. This year alone, we have, well, I have not, but the city council has raised numerous fees because the costs of service keep going up, as folks say. The city council has enacted a $1.4 million storm sewer fee this year. Now we're going to add a sales tax increase. But we still haven't bridged the gap, apparently. And what I want to know is, when will there be proposals to bridge the entire gap? And I find it frankly repulsive that people will vote for this, not knowing the rest, not, there's not even any, anything on the table to discuss. And I just, that is beyond me, is absolutely beyond me. City budget growth has been outpacing the local economy by fourfold over the past several years. And I think instead of raising the sales tax, why don't we look at this, by the old saying, necessity is the mother of invention? Let's, let's impose a little bit more discipline on ourselves and say, "We're not gonna do this," and then we're gonna test ourselves to be how innovative we can be and see how much better we can be at spending the taxpayers' dollars. But if we can't get there by just doing this, let's see the rest of, let's see the rest of what's on the table now. I, I, I can't possibly be for this without seeing the rest of the proposals from the city. As far as emails that I've received, it has been an overwhelming outpouring of opposition to this. I'm sure you, no one here is gonna be surprised by that based on the ward that I represent. But I represent a huge portion of the, of the high taxpayers in this town, and they are livid with the continued raising of taxes and fees. The other suggestion that I would make, too, is somebody made a comment about how Champaign can raise $2.5 million with a quarter percent. Well, here's the stark reality of that. They can do that because for decades, Champaign has been growing. Now, why would that be? So I'm not gonna beat a dead horse anymore. I'm adamantly opposed to this. I think it's the absolute wrong thing to do, and we should force more discipline on ourselves just to raise the level of our game and see where we can find savings for the taxpayers and the residents of Urbana.
Charlie?
I wasn't gonna speak to this, but I think a couple of points that need to be mentioned here. We've had a flat budget for five, six years now, with the exception of three areas: wages, pension, healthcare. Those have gone up faster than inflation, they've gone up faster than we've gotten revenues in. That is the, that is the reason the Chamber of Commerce can make the claims that they make. But the reality is, the only way we can cut pension, healthcare, and wages is to cut staff. And I don't think, we're, we've, we've allowed positions to stay unfilled as long as possible. That's how we got through the, the worst part of the recession, keeping 10 positions open. Those positions are now mostly filled. We've kept some open right now, and, but we're struggling to, to make things work. So unless we are willing to cut people, that's police, fire, and Public Works, that's the majority of our, of our, of our employees, we don't have any choice but to come up with the funds to meet payroll, pension, and healthcare costs.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next ordinance number 2013-09-078, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana. And here is Robert Myers to talk about it.
I was just going to mention that the changes that you requested have been incorporated in the draft ordinance that you have before you, including taking out any changes to home occupation permits, and then clarifying the process for the Queequee permits.
Charlie?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, reports of standing committees.
I'm gonna go try to go through these as quickly as possible without losing my voice. Okay.
Charlie. Being a liquor license holder, I need to recuse myself from the next two items.
Yep, got it. So I put them first. Okay, ordinance number 2013-986, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses for Black Rock Pizza Company, LLC 142 Lincoln Square, for the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2013-987, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class R2 liquor licenses for Sitara Indian Restaurant and Lounge, LLC 114 South Race Street, for the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Just for the next three items, C1, 2, and 3, I'll abstain for a conflict of interest, I may ask.
Okay, item C1, Resolution Number 2013-947R, a resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium fiscal year 2013-14, September 2013's Habitat Project, for the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next up is Resolution 2013-948R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat Choto Developer, 1205 West Beslan Street and 1208 and 1/2 West Beslan Street, West Dublin Street, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
A motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, flipping the page here. Resolution Number 2013-949R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat Choto Operating September 2013, for the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, item D is sale of certain real estate, and you have revised ordinances in front of you that Libby will address. Ordinance Number 2013-983, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1205 West Beslan Street, for the committee, I so move.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Libby?
In this ordinance and the next one, the change is in Section 4, and that reflects the supermajority that is needed for the sale.
Okay, any other discussion?
What is the sale price? Yeah.
Hold on a minute, I will look it up.
Maybe I couldn't find it in there, too.
Those were, those are the property values that were brought up on screen.
Yeah, but I couldn't remember this, there was actual sale price in there, was there in the?
Okay, this one is for $1.
All right.
Okay.
Now we need, now we need like, what, a million more?
Well, would you explain how the financing and... Well, would you explain how the financing and, and property acquisition, these are grant funds from the federal government, right, that pay for all this?
Yes, this is part of our program where we take lots that might have dilapidated homes on them, and they're cleared. And we have a wonderful organization locally called Habitat for Humanity that is able to take these lots and build homes for very low-income families. And of course Habitat uses both federal dollars that we would provide as well as a lot of sweat equity from the people who live in the homes. So some of our neighborhoods, called our target areas in North Urbana and East Urbana that qualify because of the income levels can have our community development block grants used to help to revitalize these older neighborhoods. And when you look in North Urbana and parts of East Urbana, you will see neighborhoods that have been stabilized because these older homes have been able to be rebuilt with homes by Habitat or Ecolab or Homestead or other organizations that are community housing development organizations. So it wouldn't be a situation where we would be wanting to make money or, or profit off of the homes, not, not like in a usual real estate development.
But, but the money comes from, the money to acquire or clear the property is all coming from federal grant money, right?
Exactly.
Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Okay, next up is ordinance Number 2013-984, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1208 and 1/2 West Dublin Street. Again, corrected ordinance in front of us. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Is that correct? Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Okay, next up is ordinance Number 2013-981, an ordinance amending Schedule N of Section 23193, Urbana Local Traffic Code, limiting parking on certain streets or public parking lots. This is High Street, and I believe it's the removal of parking or restrictions. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries.
For those following along, we're on, on item F here. Ordinance Number 2013-980, an ordinance approving right-of-way dedication, 608 West Killarney Street. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
My apologies, I missed the, included item G, which has been bumped. Ordinance, so we're on H, ordinance Number 2013-977, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 16, Section 16.7, regarding noise and vibrations to clarify when construction operations are prohibited. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
I just had one question about that.
Carol?
I, I don't know if this was, came up in the committee, but is this strictly in relationship to like, construction companies at certain times?
It's the ordinance, we left out a 12-hour period that wasn't anywhere, everything else was defined, and so there was no coverage from this time correction that the noise ordinance applied in its entirety for this time period. So we're just plugging that time period in, correcting a typo.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries.
Okay, next is item, is our ordinance Number 2013-979, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 5, Article 11 flood hazard areas. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Dennis?
I just thought I'd say that, that what this does is establish an updated flood hazard map, basically. So that's an important thing for our city to have.
Bill?
Yeah, I, on the, I understand the map part. It's the zoning part that I'm a little confused on because it looks like the whole zoning thing was basically thrown out and replaced with another one. And with the underlining and crossing out, it's kind of hard to tell what the differences are. Is there any way you could just tell us if there were any major differences? I mean, like, for example...
A Bill Gray question?
For example, the definitions were basically all thrown out, and we got all new definitions. But when I compared some of them, they looked exactly the same, so.
It's true. A lot of them are exactly the same, and they added a few other words for definitions. But to answer your question, I think the, the major change here is that we are, in fact, instituting the new digitized maps, which is a more accurate floodplain, particularly the Boneyard Creek area. All other factors, for the most part, that govern development, activity, uses, et cetera, within those areas remain unchanged.
So there, there weren't any main, major differences on how buildings can be built in the floodplain?
The floodproofing and all those aspects are essentially the same, yes.
I think it's an artifact from having moved a whole section.
Yeah, that's why I was trying, I noticed that on the parts I compared, they looked the same.
There's some new sections, so the numbering changed.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Mike Madigan?
Were there any substantive changes that were not required by the federal government? Or is this all, are all the zoning changes required by the federal government? Or were there any?
What's in this ordinance is what's required by FEMA, the federal government. So if we want to partake of the FEMA flood insurance program, we have to, in essence, pass this ordinance or be even more restrictive than what the ordinance is.
Right, but there were no additional or ancillary substantive changes made while this was open, while this ordinance was being opened up, as far as zoning goes? Or was it all just pretty much, hey, this is what FEMA is asking or is requiring, and so that's what we're doing?
If I understand you correctly, correct, yes. We haven't had much activity within the floodplain in a while, anyway, but...
I'm just referring to this, this zoning, this section of the ordinance being opened up, and I'm wondering if there...
Maybe from community development's perspective, she may have some.
Libby Tyler.
Talking about zoning, there's zoning as far as land use, and then there's flood zones, and those are two different things. It's a little bit confusing. But we were given a model ordinance by FEMA, and that's what you have tonight before you. So that's the language that they asked us to use to adopt the new maps. But the maps do show changes. For the most part, we've, properties benefited in the new mapping, that there are more properties that have less flood zone than before. But there are some properties that have more. So you really do need to look at the two maps and, and Bill and Eric, I think, in your words, in particular, there may be, may be a handful of properties that will have more flood zone than they did previously.
Yeah, if your question is the flood zone change, yes, it definitely changed. So I didn't want to missfully do that way.
Well, no, it wasn't what I was after. I was just wondering, is everything in here what FEMA is requiring? Or while we had the opportunity to be reviewing this ordinance, or this, this section of the city code, were there any other substantive changes being made outside of what FEMA was requiring? That's what I was after.
No.
Diane?
And can you remind us where we would find the updated map to check?
It, well...
Is it, is it available on the?
I think it's online now, actually, in the Stormwater section of the Public Works section. I need to confirm that, but if not, it will be soon, if it is, once this is passed.
Under the Stormwater. Under the Stormwater.
Under Stormwater and Public Works. And there may be also, Community Development might have this in their section too, I don't know. Is there zoning ordinance? I don't know, if you will.
I can answer.
Charlie?
Brad Bennett gave us some links. It was part of his presentation on this, to where they were. So you can, if you don't, if you can't find them, shoot Brad an email, I think. They're also on the, I think you ultimately end up on the FEMA website where all the maps live.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries.
Next is Resolution 2013-946R, a resolution approving an Illinois Environmental Protection Agency notice of intent for Phase 2 of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Stormwater Program for the year 2013. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion?
I think this is a four, this is a five, I, I said 2013, that's when we pass it, it's good for five years.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The last item from committee is ordinance Number 2013-985, an ordinance to approve the purchase of a certain right-of-way north of the current northerly terminus of Lincoln Avenue as part of the Olympian Drive construction project. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much, Charlie. Okay, we're on to reports of special committees. Dennis Roberts?
Yeah. Sorry, I probably, probably could have put this into public input a little bit earlier, but I'll just call myself a special committee because I help coordinate historic, historic commemorations in the, in the community. And I, I just wanted to hold up a flyer that we're putting out right now. And what it really does is it announces and it invites the public to celebrate the city's 180th birthday. Our birthday is actually in June. We actually had passed that landmark, June 21st, that's the solstice. 180 years ago, Urbana was founded, and, you know, at the same time, we can say that the county of Champagne was created. So we're celebrating now that people are back from their vacations. We're going to have a party at the, it's going to be held at the Urbana Landmark Hotel Ballroom. It's going to be on Saturday, the 5th of October. It's going to be in the morning at 11 o'clock to noon. So if you're at the market and shopping, when you finish getting your tomatoes, come by the Landmark Hotel and enjoy a program that includes music provided by the Urbana High School Symphonic Band, a short greeting by the mayor, a commentary, a little comment, a few comments about honoring Urbana's most significant architect, Joseph Royer, whose birthday, 140th birthday was this August, it was August 2nd of this year. So we're taking a nod to Mr. Royer. We're also going to be announcing winners of the Urbana's Birthday Limerick Contest, and you've heard the first entry tonight. And, you know, and, and it's appropriate that, you know, a limerick is supposed to be a five-line poem. The verse is "A-A-B-B-A", and it's supposed to end with a humorous comment, so, you know, or whatever you want to put into it. So we're passing out forms for the limericks, and you'll find it also online on our city website. And please bring your, your, send the limericks to myself. There's an email on the form, or you can drop them off at the clerk's office. We'll put a box up there to collect them. And we're going to have music by John Philip Sousa about him or from him. He's not going to actually be here to perform it. And we're going to end with the recreation of a reenactment footrace. This is a historic event that happened in Urbana on Main Street, and it was between, it was a bet between Abraham Lincoln and Sam Waters, who owned a tavern in town and a hotel. And we're going to recreate that, and of course, then we're going to have birthday cake. So a lot's going to happen, and it's going to be very simple, and it's all free to the public.
Thank you very much, Dennis. I don't think we have any other special committees. Reports of officers. Libby Tyler, Community Development.
I passed out some flyers for everybody and have some in the back as well. I was, met with Rick Manner last week, and he asked me to let the council know about this fun opportunity coming up this weekend on Saturday from 9 to 3. They'll be having tours, once again, at the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District Facility on University Avenue. And in the flyer, it says, "Well, why would you want to come to the open house Saturday, September 21st, from 9 to 3? Because sewage treatment is something you don't know about. It is way more interesting than you think, and you'll never forget your experience," so.
That, that is really true, Libby, and the group that went to China, Diane and, and Dennis and I, we went to two sewage treatment plants in Guangzhou, and they were state-of-the-art, and they had very elegant conference rooms, and they were very well-run. We were terribly impressed. We're probably the only tourists that ever asked to go to, not one, but two sewage treatment plants. And we've been to the Urbana Champagne one, and it really is an education, and they do, they seem to be state-of-the-art and do a great job. Smaller scale than Guangzhou. Charlie?
And given that there are other activities going on Saturday that we've been asked to, the Fire Department event is Saturday. If you've not done that before, I would suggest you do that because the, the sanitary district will give you a, a tour anytime to a group of council members that's, that's needed. It is a worthwhile tour, but I think the, the Fire 101 class is even, even more important.
Scott Tess?
I'll concur with those comments. I went to that, that tour last year, and I can attest, it's a lot more interesting than, than you would expect. I enjoyed it. I've got a memo in front of you, placed in front of you tonight. This is responding to the request from last week from Committee of the Whole to further investigate some of the potential alternatives to purchasing renewable energy credits. So instead of spending that 700ths of a cent over here on renewable energy credits, move it to the other side of the agreement and add it on to a, a city fee. So I've, I'm highlighting just three, three programs or, or possibilities here for your consideration. And I just want to briefly mention them all. The first is refunding the Home Energy Performance Program that the city ran a couple of years ago with stimulus funds. Our consultant, in terms of what it's worth for our climate action plan, our consultant came up with a number of $5.26 per metric ton of carbon dioxide equivalent offset. So that's a, you know, a very low number in terms of how much you can get done. The next one is LED streetlight retrofit. That's been mentioned a couple times in council. And Engineering and Operations helped put together some numbers. A project like that is about $750 per LED or per fixture. And the, the majority of the savings, there's an attachment from a, a past lighting survey that the city had commissioned. The, the payback period, it's called return on investment here, is listed around three and a half years, which is good. Some of the other studies we've seen that other cities have commissioned have been around four years as well. It's not as good in terms of carbon dioxide offsets or, or energy savings because most of the savings in LED streetlight retrofits is actually in the labor and the materials, so the maintenance side. So it's, it's a good, it's good for the budget, it's good for, you know, it's a good dollar value, but less value in terms of carbon dioxide reductions. And then the last item is HVAC equipment replacements. What I've done here with, with supportive operations staff is mentioned a couple of replacements with, with support of operations staff is mentioned a couple of replacements that we're undertaking either just recently finished or in the very near future. And the dollar amounts are in there to give council and mayor a sense of, you know, how much these things cost, and how much you could get done with the $60,000 a year that we're talking about. The Smart Energy Design Assistance Center has shared information, and it's one of the slides in the packet as well, about, you know, what kind of greenhouse gas offset you can get with equipment replacements. And they've given a number of $890 per metric ton CO2 equivalent, and a 12-year payback. So it's not quite as good a, you know, a return. And I think, I think that's a good summary.
Happy to take any questions. Any questions for Scott? Dennis?
Yeah, and I'm just remembering now that maybe four or five years ago, the library's major heating and air conditioning unit went out and had to be replaced, and that was a huge investment. So, I mean, I imagine that they used the most, probably just that investment alone probably is saving a lot of money as far as heat efficiency goes, because it's a modern, you know, reinvestment there. But these things do go out, and these are like major pieces of equipment that are really important to maintain the quality of the climatized air in the buildings. So obviously, when we come to a replacement, it's important to use smart energy there.
Anyone else? Eric?
So one of the things, I guess, I guess we're already starting to think about what we're going to do next year, but one of the things that occurred to me subsequent to our discussions last time is that there really are two issues, if we think about these as alternatives to, to RECs. One is there's energy savings per se, which means we'll have, we'll lower our carbon footprint by just using less. But it seems to me that doesn't provide a net push towards renewables. Whereas the RECs, in principle, and we can, looks as though we're going to have a debate about whether they do this in practice, but in principle, they do provide a, a pressure for the, for the nation to, to move towards renewables. So I'm wondering, that seems like a complicated calculation as to how to balance the one against the other in terms of, of how are you affecting the most carbon reduction for your dollar. But just to make your life more complicated, if you can, over the next, you know, period of time, before we go through this cycle again, think about some guidance on that. That would be great, that would help our hurting brains, I think.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks for this. So if, if the idea is to establish some kind of fund eventually, where we could use it for energy efficiency or for renewables, if we wanted to subsidize solar cells on roofs, or solar hot water, or whatever, we'd need some kind of fund established. And then thinking about how that would, how the accounting would work on your end, trying to figure out how much greenhouse gas is reduced. I mean, comparing the whole cost of the fixture, of the replacement, to the savings might not be quite as appropriate as the differential, what we would have spent on the fixture for a regular sodium vapor, whatever, versus LED. If it's extra $50 or extra $200, then that would, I guess, be what you'd want to compare to the extra greenhouse gas reduction. Or else, like, when we replaced the heating and air conditioning in this building, did we get the absolute most efficient, or did we try to get something that was cost-effective, but maybe not perfectly efficient? Maybe if we had the extra fund, we could spend a little extra money to get the most efficient, and then account for that as a greenhouse gas reduction. So it's, it's the differential, I think, that we'd want to use out of such a fund, if it existed, the fantasy fund.
Fantasy.
So, so yeah, if, you know, if we could magically transform that $60,000 a year into a fantasy fund for energy efficiency, or designate 20% of the quarter-cent sales tax, which I've suggested, but I know there's a lot of people wanting pieces of that money. But I think, you know, it would be any, it would be an investment in efficiency to save money, and also to reduce greenhouse gases. So I guess, you know, when it comes down to comparisons and everything, when we're comparing the RECs payoff for metric tons and everything, you have to, you kind of have to believe that there's a reduction in greenhouse gases from RECs, rather than just a substitution, whether we're just borrowing the energy that had already been produced and that had already created greenhouse gas reduction two or three years ago, and then we're claiming it as our own. And that's my main argument, is that there's really no net greenhouse gas reduction, because there's no additional renewable capacity gained. We're just kind of taking on, just kind of taking, just believing that by, by buying these things, that some of the money's going to get through the big companies and be reinvested in renewables. There may be other ways, maybe when your committee's looking at other ways to reduce greenhouse gases and invest, we maybe could subsidize directly some of the companies that do solar power or something, and, you know, buy three or four solar collectors for them. At least then we know that all of our money's going directly to the subsidy and not being siphoned off by traders and stuff. And, you know, the numbers would come out a lot lower, but I think you have to have numbers you can believe in. But I just, you know, all of us here do things for the environment. We are, you know, Charlie and me and Diane ride our bikes almost everywhere, and the mayor walks everywhere. And we know that you can't be 100% renewable for 42 cents a month. It's just not possible. We work hard to do that, and we aren't anywhere near that. So, you know, I'm just looking for a number I can believe in, that's all. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Scott. Are there any other reports of officers?
Quick one here.
Yeah, Charlie?
I'd just like to thank Public Works for adding some receptacles above the counter here for us. And maybe now I won't forget to plug in my, yeah, no more, well, I was forgetting to plug in my adapter, or my power, even though I dropped the cord down. Note also that it has a couple of USB chargers in it, too, so, so you can keep your smartphone going during council meetings.
Just don't call other council members. Okay, Carol and I went to a meeting sponsored by the Ford Foundation, where we met with other communities that are dealing with broadband. We learned a lot. It was a wonderful discussion, and they're going to keep the group going. We'll maybe have an annual meeting, but it was really worthwhile. You want to say something about it, Carol?
Well, I learned that every single broadband community is different from this one, that's for sure. And this is going to be a, I believe, a work in progress. So I will be definitely the one reporting, that's for sure.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Diane?
I, I just wanted to thank our community development department, our public works department, and our fire and police departments for all they did to help the Lehman Community Garden celebration a success. And a special thanks goes to Fire Marshal Phil Edwards, who was our DJ and outstanding dancer, and basically party coordinator for the day. So I really appreciate the staff's support, and the residents of the neighborhood do as well. Thank you.
And the, and the new bike path has been opened up.
Oh, that's, well, that's another one.
That's, that's a separate celebration. Okay, Bill Gray?
Just wanted to let council members know that Friday, we had a half-day tornado exercise session at the Emergency Operating Center, and I thought it was quite good and quite realistic in preparing and giving better people, the leaders in the community in Champaign County, a better understanding of just what it takes to tackle, you know, major catastrophes. So I thought it was a good training exercise for the folks that attended.
Okay. Is there, is there any new business?
No.
Apparently not, and so there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.